You're all set.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm calling the Bridgewater Town Council meeting to order is Tuesday, April 5th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. If we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America. To the Republic.
One nation under God. indivisible, equal to liberty. Justice. As a reminder, this meeting is being aired live and recorded pursuant to Section 20 of Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. This meeting of the town council for the town of Bridgewater will be fully remote and accessible to the public through remote participation to the greatest extent possible. There'll be no in-person attendance permitted. Citizens who wish to tune into the meeting may do so do so via Zoom or Facebook Live. Before we get into the agenda, we do have one condolence this evening on behalf of the Bridgewater Town Council to the family of Mr. John R. Hattisty upon his passing on the 22nd of March, 2022. Mr. Hattisty served in the United States Coast Guard during the Vietnam War. I'd like to take a moment of silence in recognition of all those veterans and first responders who have passed. Okay, moving on. First item on our agenda is approval of the previous meeting. First, there is, thank you, is March 15th, 2022. You have a motion to approve. And we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood? And Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, moving on. Item B, March 18th, 2022 minutes. A motion to approve.
So moved.
And any discussion? Seeing none, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. President, we'll just need to remind councils that warrant in the meeting that they have to abstain.
Understood. Thank you, Councilor George.
Mr. Columbotus?
Recording.
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Not present, not abstaining.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Perry?
Again, I was not present, so I abstain.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. George?
Yes.
Seven, four, zero opposed.
Okay, thank you. Moving on. Next item is Item B announcements from the president. I have a couple of just brief announcements. First, just to the council and to citizens of the town. We did had hopes to be back into council chambers at this meeting. However, we felt it was best to, or I did, at least to stay remote to be able to communicate with citizens that we will be returning at our next meeting to the council chambers. We will be on Facebook Live and we will be on BTV. However, there'll be no remote participation option. So those citizens moving forward that wish to participate, it would be like pre-pandemic. You'd need to come to council chambers and be present during the meeting. The next item I just wanted to just quickly address due to the election in town council timing. Unless the town attorney says otherwise, I would like to talk about and just let my fellow council members know under Section 2 point the dash 3, Council President Election Eligibility Terms of Office Powers and Duties. I would like to anticipate returning on May 10th and invite the town clerk to at least reorganize the town council and choose a new town council president. I say that by looking at Item B where it talks about the town council president shall be for one year beginning on the second Monday following the election. So I just wanted to make that public announcement for the rest of the council.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Um, through you to the town attorney, and I could be incorrect on this, but I believe that Council Gallagher served longer than one year as council president. And we held off on electing a new president till we had an actual election. Am I correct on that?
Even if it's, even if it's Counselor Gallagher was okay with that, I'm not.
Okay, well, that was, that was. So if that's the reason we're doing it, Mr. President, that's fine by me. I, I just, that was going to be my question. Are we doing this procedurally? Or are we doing this because you want to move on rightfully? So, okay.
Yeah, I think, I think it's the right. Yeah, and I think it's the right thing to do for the next council president because due to the election, they could serve a very short window and either get reelected as president, or we have to, you know, that have a very short term in this position. So I just think it's the right thing to do in terms of the president's position. Counselor Gallagher?
No, I agree. I mean, I think that because we didn't have an election in April, it was, it was moved ahead for June. It was the consensus of the council that we just continue with the leadership as it was at that time until, until the election takes place. But it's certainly, it's certainly a prerogative to continue after May 10th if you want, or we can reorganize as you indicate. Certainly up. It certainly is something you can, you can always say, you know, at any time during your presidency, you want to give up the presidency. Not give it up, but it's time to move on. So I respect your decision. You don't have to. You still have time to change your mind. So, but I understand what you're saying. Yes.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, moving on. Proclamations. We have none this evening. Move to citizens' open forum. Do we have any citizens here for citizens' open forum wishing to speak? Oh, I see. Ms. Neary?
Yep.
Ms. Neary, you're up.
Oh, thank you. Kat Neary, Lakeside Drive. I just have a couple of questions that I suspect the counselors can answer when the proposals come up later on this evening. One is on the Feeding the Wildlife Ordinance that's proposed. I'm just curious what prompted that. And I suspect Counselor Moore can explain that at that time. Also, Counselor Columbotus has proposed the recodification to be on the agenda tonight. And I'm wondering if the workshops are all done. I recall that back in February, it wasn't recorded, so I couldn't view it shortly thereafter. But also, I don't know that enough publicity has been given to it. So I'd like to know if there will be more workshops so that the general public is aware of these changes. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neary. Do we have any other citizens for citizens' open forum?
Somebody with the phone number 508? Has their hand up?
Hi, good evening. Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can. Just your name and street.
Certainly. Melissa Raymondetta, Lakeside Drive. I am speaking in opposition of ordinance D-FY 22022 Proposed Bridgewater Zoning Bylaw Amendment, Adult Retirement Community and Plan Development District. I'd like to refer the council to my letter dated April 5th, 2022, for further details and information. The agenda item and related documents for tonight's meeting prominently included tables that feature future tax revenue to be gained from the town of Bridgewater from the adult retirement community. Missing from the documents presented for this zoning by law amendment, is any comment or documentation related to the impact of a retirement community on the surrounding neighborhoods, Bridgewater's natural resources, and town resources in general? Claremont Companies has already completed three phases of a four-phase development within this planned development district on 163.87 acres of land that are designated as an area of critical environmental concern and border Lake Nipponikit and its associated wetlands. This one zoning by law amendment is part of a larger whole that includes Lake Shore Center development. Claremont has already added 580 residences to the PDD in addition to a large flex building, a hotel with over 100 rooms, a second office building, and parking lots. Concerns with regard to this proposal include environmental impacts on Lake Nipponikit and connected wetlands, as well as the aquifer protection area. The undeveloped land on the Lake Shore Center property is largely wetlands. Also of concern are the several archaeological sites on the undeveloped land. Would these sites be impacted by the zoning change and the permitting of a large residential development on the property? The town's resources are also impacted by any increase in residential units. Has the applicant addressed the potential impact of a third large residential development at Lake Shore Center and the strain that it will put on town departments such as fire and police? What are the impacts thus far from Phases 1 through 3? With regard to traffic and traffic safety, has any information been provided that describes how Phases 1 through 3 have impacted traffic as well as traffic safety in the area and what the applicant has done to mitigate these impacts? Before you vote on this proposal zoning by law amendment, please review the impacts of Phases 1 through 3 of the Lake Shore Center development and obtain information related to potential impacts of a third large residential development in this area. Also, please consider a recommendation that this undeveloped land stay undeveloped for the for the enjoyment of Lake Shore Center residents and the surrounding community. Thank you for hearing my comments.
Thank you, Melissa. And if you did mention you sent something, I, as a member of the town council, did not receive anything. So just if you could check the website and make sure you have the right address for myself. Thank you. Do we have any other citizens for citizens' open forum? Okay. Debbie, I do not see any.
I do not see any either.
Okay, thank you. Moving on. Next item is appointments. We have none this evening. Next item is hearings. We have a hearing for FY 22-039, laying out and accepting a private way to drop lane. It is 7:13. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and ask if the petitioner looks like Counselor Chase, if you have anything that you would like to say.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I would simply say that I, for my part, have reviewed the documentation with respect to the requirements that this development has, has met and the approvals that have been granted by various town departments. I've also visually examined the site. I, I find no reason for which the site should not be accepted as a public way in the town of Bridgewater. I don't know if perhaps our town manager may have, have further input. I would defer to him.
Thank you, Counselor. I don't have a whole lot of additional information to give you. All the town, relevant town departments have signed off, and most importantly, the town engineer. So I'm happy to move forward.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. At first asked if we have any general questions from the public? Any general questions from the public? And Debbie, I note that the 7969 hand has been raised since she spoke. Melissa said, I just believe that remains up. Okay, I'm not seeing any, any, anyone from the public speaking in favor of. Okay, again, I don't see anyone, anyone from the public speaking in opposition. And again, I am not seeing anybody. Any questions from members of the council? Okay, not seeing any. I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing. It is 7:15 PM. I'll just add that on their meeting held on 2/16/22, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend acceptance. This measure has been duly advertised for a public hearing in the enterprise and on the town's website and above his notice. This measure may be finally considered this evening upon conclusion of the hearing. So we first need to entertain a motion that find that laying out is required by common convenience and necessity. So entertain a motion to find that the laying out is required by common convenience and necessity. So moved? And we have a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve laying out the way. So moved. And a second. Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. George?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, thank you. Moving on. Licensed transactions. We have none. Presentations. We have none. Town managers report. First item is the 2020-23 budget update. Defer to the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. Budget orders were a part of your package tonight. Those were submitted on Friday. Budget books were sent this afternoon to the council and the finance committee. You will get another piece of the budget book later this week, which is sort of the new piece that we're trying to, trying to make permanent fixture in our, in our budget books. But you will see that. I'll send that out via email and we'll post it on the website when that is finalized. We think the budget reflects the council's budget resolution, certainly as we do every year. Some of the drivers on the expense side, just to quickly go over them, increase of two entry-level positions in public safety. We have an additional IT position to provide additional assistance in IT. We've got some pay equity adjustments in the budget. All of, almost all the budgets reflect collective bargaining agreements that have been finalized. And certainly, we are projecting an increase in our oil and gas line item. Education, the BR assessment increases by 3.21%. Our out-of-district increases are all due to slight increases in, in their budgets, but also mostly due to student population increases. Norfolk Aggie being one, Bristol Aggie being another, and Bristol Plymouth being the third. We also have restructured in the general fund budget how we pay for our parks and rec. We've shifted from really charging off a lot of salary money to the golf course in previous years and also charging off regular salaries to the revolving fund. We have now triggered by retirement and new hires, we thought it was a good time to really fix how we fund parks and rec so that it's a general fund expense built into the general fund budget. We have also an increase of about 10%, a little over 10% in our retirement assessment. And our health insurance increase rates have increased about three point, or our health insurance line item has increased about 3.25%. So that's a very, very general look at the budget. But as I say, we've sent the budget books out and obviously the orders are in your packet tonight. Assuming that you'll study those with, with some diligence in the coming weeks. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions if any counselor has one.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Questions. Couple of questions. Come on.
Sorry, I didn't see it. Counselor Gallagher, yours.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions, and I'm sure this is through you, Mr. President, to the town manager. Michael, I just wanted, I just want to know, obviously, there's been a lot of movement on Beacon Hill recently with the supplemental budget. I believe part of it is for the current fiscal year and part of it will be for fiscal '23. One of the things that I've been watching is that Chapter 90 money, as you know, and it's not just Bridgewater, although we, you know, we get our emails about the road conditions in Bridgewater, but the roads in general throughout the state are in pretty rough shape. Can you just give us a little insight on how that Chapter 90, additional Chapter 90 monies might affect us in, in some of the work you're going to try to do with the roads in the town?
Absolutely. Great question. So I think certainly as Counselor Gallagher knows, and probably most of the counselors, Chapter 90 funds are distributed to cities and towns throughout the state. It's based on a formula, sort of a formulaic method. We historically will get between $700,000 and $750,000 per year. That money is essentially designed to do, as Counselor Gallagher mentioned, pay for repairs, overlays, crack sealing for roads. It can also pay for sidewalk reconstruction or sidewalk repair and so forth. So, so those monies do not appear in the general fund budget. Those, those monies come into us from the state directly, and we expend those monies every year. The roadway superintendent and DPW will go through the assessment, you know, the road, road condition, sidewalk condition assessment, and look at, you know, look at what the priorities are, where the most bang for the buck can, can happen in terms of road repair. So, so if there is some movement on Beacon Hill that somehow substantially increases our Chapter 90 funds, we would just be able to knock off more priorities off of that list. So we may be able to address FY '24 issues and FY '23. So it would be good. It would be a little catch-up. Interestingly, in prior years, the, the, you know, the governors, any governor makes a big deal about Chapter 90 increases. Unfortunately, when it trickles down to the cities and towns, there's really very little substantial increase in the actual dollars that come to us. So, so we're hoping that some of that movement on Beacon Hill actually does give us some more substantial dollars. But, but that is really the major source of all of our road maintenance, road repair money. And that's other than a little bit that's budgeted in the general fund. So, so we watch that very carefully and essentially depend on, on those, that $700,000 and change when it comes in each year.
Thank you.
Counselor Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. To the town manager, please. Just as a follow-up to Counselor Gallagher's question, do we have a, a list for this year's planned road repairs specifically as to which streets? I know it's something we've done in the past. It may or may not be on paper yet, but that's what I'm curious about.
It, I believe the DPW is working on that right now. I know that there were some adjustments. Every year, they try to plan out a year in advance. We try not to publicize that list because so much can change over the course of a winter season as it did this winter. So there were substantial degradation to some of the, the roads in town. So, so they're trying to figure out the best way to address the needs. But I suspect that we'll have, have a, a listing up very shortly, certainly prior to the next council meeting.
Thank you.
And I'll say that once I get it, I will certainly pass that along.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Wood.
We're still on the budget update. So are you sending, or are you or the finance director sending out the source of revenue worksheet? I don't think I've seen that yet.
If that hasn't been seen yet, I'll make sure that we get that out. Fairly soon.
Thank you.
Tomorrow.
Okay, do we have any other questions from the council? Okay, seeing none. Michael just had one question, or more of a statement, just something to think about. I see year after year, the parking line item, $15,000 that's paid in overtime. So when you're looking at the average entry patrolman wage of $100,000 a year, we're paying police officers on overtime around $80 an hour to write parking tickets. Doesn't seem like the best use of that money. And I know that years ago, before we started laying people off, we actually had a fully functional operation with employees who are pulling, I can at least remember, revenue over $100,000 a year. So I'd kind of like to know, what is the police department bringing in in that revenue? And, you know, it seems to me you eat up that $15,000 fairly quickly. So does the chief supplement additional hours on overtime? And why have we never resorted back to a parking enforcement officer that's operating 40 hours a week? I know it's something probably that we can't do now, but I would really like to see the town move back in that direction, and we could probably better use, utilize the police officers doing other things rather than writing tickets in the center of town. Not to say I don't believe that we need to do it in order to keep the college under control, but I think it could be done. We actually raise the revenue and reduce our costs.
I will certainly take a look at that and have the finance director give us some numbers relative to that. I do know one of the things that we've found, and I say this more as an aside, one of the things we've found is significantly changed habits. So I think, I think you've got more students that don't actually have automobiles. We also know that BSU has done a better job of convincing their students to park. They provided more parking for their students. So we don't have quite the negative impact, certainly in the downtown area. But I will get, I'll get more facts and figures and bring that, distribute that to the council.
Not to beat it up, but would you say that this money is really used by the chief for targeted enforcement during certain periods and, and this sort of large gaps where there's no enforcement because it's not an issue?
I would say that there's general enforcement throughout the year, but certainly less in the summer months as it concerns parking, as, as would be expected. A fair amount of that money is spent in, you know, in September, just to try to make sure that we do enforcement there so that everybody's well aware of where they can park and where they can.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you. Okay, seeing no other questions, we'll move on to Item B, update on water treatment plant completion.
The water treatment plant construction, again, two years ago, I believe it was two years ago. And the plant itself is coming, almost coming to completion. I've been making sure that we get posted up some pictures and status on weekly, every other week basis. The original completion date for the entire project was to be May. It is now pushed off to early next spring, which sounds, sounds crazy, but there are two major reasons for that. First reason is there's a backorder of what are referred to as the IO modules, which is the technology that actually essentially runs the plant. It's been backordered for a good year now. So, so we have to wait for that. If those came in, in June, we still would be subject to a delay because part of this overall project is the rebuilding of the wells that, that actually supply the water to the plant. And as we go into the summer months, DEP will not let us, and we wouldn't decommission wells to actually get that work done. So, so we will have to wait until October. We'll demobilize, or the contractor will demobilize, and we'll wait until October to remobilize to complete the work that's required on the wells. And once that work is done, then the plant can get up and running and get, start doing the, the job that it was built to do. So just as, again, as an aside, we've negotiated a number of change orders to accommodate the new schedule so that we make sure we're not paying for mobilizations while, while we wait through the summer. So that is, that is essentially the story of the water treatment plant. I'm certainly happy to answer questions. So that is, that is essentially the story of the water treatment plant. I'm certainly happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Council Wood.
Thank you. After the project's done, are you going to pave the road in front of the plant and further stretch the shore?
Yes, I know that there are some temporary patches there where I believe the gas line went in and also some water line, water main work under the road. But after, after the completion of the project and after it's all done, yes, that road will be repaired.
Thank you. Any, any other questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item C, update on new management agreement, Old Scotland Links Golf Course.
Old Scotland Links, I think as you all know, our golf superintendent slash Parks and Rec Director has retired. And with that retirement, we were anxious, or once we knew of that retirement, we were anxious to look into other ways that we could restructure Parks and Rec and, and also restructure the golf course or, or find a better way to run the golf course. Mostly because, you know, Charlie was, was wearing many, many hats and, and we knew that, that we would never be able to find somebody that could sustain or, or manage in the way that we needed to. So, so we looked at other ways. Our primary objective was make sure we guarantee a revenue stream that we needed to pay off any remaining bonded obligations. And also shift the downside risk of running a business, a risky business to a non-town entity, somebody else that, that would be willing to take that risk, that knew how to do it. So we issued a RFP, Request for Proposals, last fall. We received three responses. We selected Indigo Golf, which is a division of Trune, which is a very large company. Trune runs hundreds of courses throughout the country and the world. And so I'm very confident that we have, especially after seeing the transition and, and how that's worked, I'm very confident we have a highly professional and certainly experienced company on board. We signed an agreement with them in February, which guarantees the town an annual fee of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars plus twenty percent of gross revenues exceeding nine hundred seventy-five thousand, up to a million two seventy-five, and then thirty percent of the gross revenues for anything over a million two seventy-five. After we ran the numbers in a typical year, well, there's, it's hard to identify what a typical year is in golf, but in a typically year that would net us somewhere just shy of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually. So, so we felt pretty comfortable with that. Certainly within that three hundred and fifty, we can pay any additional bond obligations. We can cover, you know, any retirement, this old retirement assessments or, or so forth. So, so we're comfortable, very comfortable with that figure, very happy with that figure, quite frankly. And both contractors up there, Trune, the golf management and then Barrett's for food and beverage have, have made arrangements between themselves to pay all the operational expenses of the clubhouse directly, which means that we can wash our hands of, of the obligations to, to pay utilities and so forth. So, so I think we've got a, a good, a good crew up there. We, one of the things we were concerned about is, is the ability or the opportunity for our current staff to remain working at the golf course. And, and Trune, Indigo Golf, Trune, has retained anybody that wishes to stay. We did have one retirement. And then we also had the superintendent, golf superintendent, transition over to the Parks and Rec Director just recently. So other than that, the assistant superintendent at the golf course has actually gotten a promotion now under Trune. And, and Chris Anthony, our system pro, has, has also been kept on and he is doing essentially what he was doing prior to, prior to the transition. So, so we're happy. We'll see. This will be the first season that we work with them. And so far, we've had really good communication. So I'm quite, quite pleased. But, but again, happy to answer any questions.
I have a couple of questions.
Thank, thank you, Council Gallagher. Thank you, Mr. President. I, I think that it's time that we did this. I, I think we've talked, this town's talked about not being in the golf business for a long time. I think it's, it's good timing to get into a contract like this. I think the fees that we're going to hopefully get are, were a good negotiation tool. And I'm glad to see that there was obviously some, obviously a lot of concern about the current employees that are there and they, they weren't just, you know, thrown to the side. I think that's good. But I do have one question. This may sound kind of silly, but the, the name of the golf course, did we reserve the right to maintain the name? Or is it going to be changed to the new Scotland Links? So the old, old New Scotland Links, was that ever a discussion or is that an issue?
Actually, it's part of the contract. And we do retain the name and there's no intention to change, change the name whatsoever.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you. Council George.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the town manager. So, Mr. Dutton, a couple of questions. In regards to the management contract, I wouldn't assume the management company to take over any debt obligations. What's going to be responsible for the management company in regards to future capital expenses, i.e. equipment, golf carts, things of that nature? Is that going to fall on their shoulders or is that still fall on ours?
That, that's a great question that the, though all those capital items will fall on their shoulders, we do, we did make adjustments. We essentially had a quote unquote closing and, and we made adjustments because we still actually are leasing about a third of our golf carts, the other two thirds we actually own, but those will be up for replacement. All those obligations, whether it's the current lease obligation that we remain having to pay for the next year, they will actually pay over and above the contracted amount. They'll pay for those obligations, those capital obligations. Once, once those leases terminate and once, once the town is, is completely out of it, then all of those capital obligations are theirs. Capital obligations relative to the clubhouse itself and relative to some of the larger items such as irrigation. The irrigation system has been in there for obviously well over twenty years. And some of those, some of those items will, will be an obligation that the town and the contractor will actually share. So there's a, as part of the contract, excuse me, as part of the contract, there is a, a capital fund that the company funds on a monthly basis. So those funds will begin to build up. And, and once the larger capital items are needed, then that discussion and negotiation will take place at that time. But all of the operational capital items, meaning exactly what you said, golf carts, mowers, trucks, whatever, are all obligations of the company.
Second question I have is, if memory serves me correctly, six years ago, and I think five years ago, the town did some capital infusions to the enterprise account to help the golf course over some lean times. Are we going to be able to recoup those funds prior to us having the discussion later on in the agenda about a new reserve account?
Yes. So we have actually, over the course of the last few years, as the golf course has done well, we have made transfers into, I believe the, the money came out of stabilization. So we have, have gradually paid some of that money back. But the closeout of the, the closeout of the enterprise fund does not preclude, you know, continually paying back those amounts until we essentially break even.
Okay. I mean, because I, I would fully expect now with us transferring the ownership, that we'd be able to make the town hold for something that I, I know a lot of people, kind of including myself, didn't necessarily feel that we were just giving them money that they didn't have to repay. So I look forward to getting more money back from the golf course. Thank you.
Council Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President. To the town manager, just to, not being a golfer myself, but this is a question I have been asked as to whether or not in the course of negotiation, consideration had been given to extension of discounts to Bridgewater residents. I'm just curious about that.
Consideration was given and, and the rate structure will always include a discount for Bridgewater residents.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to the next item is fire station project.
The fire station project, so I, I added this just because I wanted the opportunity to let councilors know and anybody that is listening to this meeting know, we have been out, well, first of all, there's a lot of information on the town's website regarding the, the fire station and the proposal that is coming before voters on April twenty-third. It's a debt exclusion question. You can find out a lot of the information on the town's website. I know there's also a Facebook page for the new fire station. So look, look for those items. Two, we've already had two sessions at the senior center. Both have been streamed on Facebook. But we've had two sessions at the senior center. One was today, one was last week. We will be doing a number of additional information sessions, sessions this coming Thursday, the seventh, we will do an information session via Zoom. So you don't have to go anywhere. So that's Thursday via Zoom at six PM. And in that Zoom address will be posted, obviously, using the town's webpage and the calendar of events. We'll do a, a session, a sort of an abbreviated session, a coffee time session at the library on Monday, the eleventh at four PM. And again, that'll be an abbreviated, more discussion based the, setting so that folks can come and ask questions and so forth if they want. We'll also do Tuesday, a week from today, Tuesday, April twelfth at eight AM at Bridgewater Bagel. And I think hopefully Councilor Gallagher will have an opportunity to join me and others at Bridgewater Bagel. And then Saturday, April sixteenth, we'll, at nine AM, we'll do another Zoom session to, to grab more people who aren't available during the week. So we will do additional dates as they come. I know that we've been invited to High Pond and, and Stone Meadow for a brief presentation as well. So we'll be doing that coming up. But again, a reminder that the debt exclusion vote is on the ballot for April twenty-third. And that's a Saturday. So I hope folks get out and vote. And that's what I have on that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the council? Council Moore?
Just a quick question. I'm curious about attendance. So if we had to guess at how many residents were reaching through the outreach program, you know, is it tens, hundreds? Do you have a sense of that?
I know the first session that we had, we had a pretty good turnout, a, a virtual turnout. I'd say in person, the first session we had, which was a week ago, I would say there were probably a dozen to fifteen people. Today's session was probably ten people or so. I don't think we reached as many people live, at least via Facebook at this afternoon session, which is understandable. But, but it's very hard to, to know who's, you know, logging on and watching it after the fact. So, but I, we actually do have those analytics, but I, it's probably a little early to try to, try to guess what that's going to look like. But in terms of numbers, that's roughly what we've seen.
Thank you.
And a lot of, I will add that there have been a lot of great questions, insightful questions and, and so that, that, that's good. People really do want to know.
And I would just add on to that for Council Moore. It is quite interesting to hear some of the feedback, at least from some of the residents that are there about how and where they're getting information. So myself, I think, you know, Facebook is such a great tool. And, you know, we've got as much information as we can on the website and running a blog. What we're hearing from the senior center is, you know, come to where they're at. So we have those meetings scheduled. And then asking for just literally hand information that they can get at the senior center that can be passed out. And I've heard things from, you know, wish there was still a town newspaper because that's where they'd prefer to get news to, you know, the possibility of even a mailing of postcards when major, you know, decisions in town are happening. So I think if not for nothing, whether this gets passed or whether it gets a no vote, I think we're learning some things that, you know, I certainly, as a member of the council, will share with other councilors so that when we are faced with another major product, what are we hearing from citizens in terms of where they're getting their information from? Unfortunately, there's no response to, you know, a town paper, you know, I don't run it, own it, and they've gone out of business or gone digital. So unfortunately. But that is what we're hearing, at least in those environments. So I just wanted to provide that for you as well. Great. Thank you.
So I'll only add, Mr. President, for Council Moore's benefit, that our analytics look like we've reached about fifteen hundred people.
That's, that's excellent. Thank you. It's a good number.
Thank you. Any other questions for the town manager on the fire station? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to discussions. We have none listed here. Next is committee reports. We have none listed. I don't believe we have any committee reports. Moving on.
Mr. President, I, I just give you, yeah, thank you. I'll just give you a quick rundown of the budget and finance results tonight. So we discussed the items on the agenda for order fifty-one, order fifty-two, order fifty, fifty-four and fifty-five. And in all those cases, there's a three zero to recommend to the council for passage.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Can you just give me the numbers one more time? Five, one, five, two, five, five. Did I hear you say?
Yeah, five, one, five, two, five, four and five, five. Everything under legislation for action.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, moving on, legislation for action. First item is A, Order Zero FY twenty-two dash zero five one, Transfer Order Town Hall Roof. The Budget and Finance Committee meeting took place prior to the town council meeting on four, five, twenty-two, voted three to oh in favor. The FinCom voted five to one to recommend at their meeting on three sixteen, twenty-two, and to entertain a motion to approve.
So moved?
So moved.
So, any discussion?
Yes.
Council Wood.
I, I actually have a, a question for the town manager through you. So, Michael, during, during the earlier discussions about the cost of the roof, I thought it was going to be a little bit more, or a different number, let's say, and that the grant would be half. So your, your numbers are, are fine. Are, are they, do, do you have some, you know, maybe a, a discussion topic or two about how you, how you came up with the cost estimate for that?
So, yes, in the short answer is we were under a time pressure because of a grant application that was due. So we went out and the town, town clerk, who's sort of taken on, you know, sort of organization of the town hall, Old Town Hall Building Committee, went out and, and got rough written estimates from, from people in the roofing business and, and came up with a straight cost of about seventy-five thousand dollars. So, so we, obviously, it's a municipal job. So we estimated that a bit higher at a hundred thousand dollars in order to do the job. So, so if, so a hundred thousand, it's a reimbursement grant. So the council has to appropriate the hundred thousand dollars. If we get the grant, then it would offset obviously proportionally. If that makes sense.
It does. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, move for roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
That's nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Moving on, item B, Order Zero FY twenty-two dash zero five two, Transfer Order Sewer PS Wet Thank you. Moving on, item B, order zero F Y twenty-two dash zero five two, transfer order sewer P S wet well repair. The Budget and Finance Committee at their meeting prior to the town council meeting on four, five, twenty-two, voted three to oh in favor. The FinCom voted six to oh to recommend at their three sixteen twenty-two meeting and detain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
And any discussion? Seeing none, move for roll call vote.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. George?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Hey, moving on, item C, order zero F Y twenty-two dash zero five four, acceptance of fire grant. The Budget and Finance Committee at their meeting that took place prior to the town council meeting on four, five, twenty-two, voted three to oh to recommend. The FinCom voted eight to oh to recommend at their three thirty twenty-two meeting and detain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, move for roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Moving on, item D, order zero F Y twenty-two dash zero five five, contractual bio. The Budget and Finance Committee at their meeting that took place to the pride, prior to the town council meeting on four, five, twenty-two, voted three to oh to recommend. The FinCom voted eight to oh to recommend at their three thirty twenty-two meeting and detain a motion to approve.
Moved.
So moved.
And any discussion? Seeing none, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Hey, moving on to old business, we have none listed. Moving on to new business, first item. Item A, order zero F Y twenty-two dash zero five six, order of taking. I'll defer to the town manager.
Mr. President, this is uh commonly referred to as a friendly taking. We uh town needs a s- small sliver of land at the corner of High Street and Wall Street uh in order to reconfigure uh that intersection. One, to make it safer, but also to accommodate the uh new High Street Bridge, which has to be uh built to accommodate the removal of the High Street Dam.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Uh, let's see, uh, any questions for the town manager? Okay, seeing none, uh entertain a motion to refer to Community Economic Development Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and I assume we have no further discussion, so move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Hey, moving on, item B, order zero F Y twenty-two dash zero five seven, transfer order contract funding, defer to the town manager.
Mr. President, uh, this order funds all non uh collective bargaining agreement, uh remaining collective or all non-collective bargaining um employees that uh that have not received adjustments so far.
Okay, do we have any questions to the town manager? Okay, see, and none, entertain a motion to refer to the Budget Finance and Finance Committee.
So moved. Second.
Okay, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. George?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, moving on, item C, ordinance D, F Y twenty-two dash zero two zero, general ordinance, chapter fourteen, article two, feeding of wildlife, uh defer to Councilmore.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. So I'm sponsoring this uh with input from town employees and residents uh who are looking for assistance responding to a few things, I think primarily safety concerns, but also uh nuisance concerns associated with uh feeding wildlife in residential areas. Um, it's specifically intended to restrict the feeding of coyotes, fox, and raccoon. Um, but it does apply to some other wildlife, uh where the feedback was that it could create unsafe situations for the animals, uh but also for the, for the neighboring residents. And primarily, the issue at stake here is teaching animals like this, like coyotes and fox, to associate food with human proximity uh can be really dangerous for the animal, because they can start seeking that out. Um, but also for the residents, you can imagine pet interactions or even um stray food kind of within the wander path. Um, and there's, there's also another um challenge associated with it, specifically with raccoons. Uh, they will continue to look for food in those areas, and it leads to litter problems and trash can knockovers and those sorts of things. Um, so uh, so the ordinance is intended to address that specific, those specific issues. Uh, it specifically does not restrict the feeding of birds or squirrels, sort of like the recreational feeding at home. Um, or other expected feeding scenarios, like things authorized by the state or farming or, or those sorts of things. Um, there are active complaints in Bridgewater, uh and so this is in response to that. Today, there is, we have no language to help people deal with those complaints. Um, and the language is based on similar ordinances from, from other towns, so there's precedent there. Um, I know there was a question during open meeting, so maybe just add a little context. Uh, there are a few uh cases that I'm aware of, uh where there're the sort of neighbor friction or even some other concerns, specifically with uh fox in two cases. A concern about a coyote and another, and then a concern about um potentially a raccoon and in another one.
Thank you, Councilmore. I wanna know if Council Columbodis did that perfect timing? Okay, any questions from the council? Okay, all right, seeing none, uh entertain a motion.
Just a quick question, Mr. President.
Oh, sorry, Dr. Perry, you're up.
No problem. Um, through you two, Eric. Eric, was this modeled after any other particular towns, similar ordinance? Or where we get the language to a lot of this?
Yeah, it's actually a collection of a few towns. Um, there, uh, and I can, I I looked at so many. I don't remember the exact towns, but I can follow up with you. Uh, but the, all of the language, but the exception, I think, of the preamble was based on existing language in other towns uh with some feedback from our own town employees.
So it is common um language in other towns, they have similar things in place?
Yes, it is. That's my understanding. I wouldn't say all towns, I don't, I don't wanna mislead there, but you know, towns that have prioritized this, uh have language like this.
Okay, thank you for the information.
Yep.
Now, I welcome it, uh, Councilmore, and think it's a a good idea. I can certainly see and have experienced uh nuisance feeding of wild animals, uh that doesn't seem appropriate and causes uh much bigger concern for neighborhoods, especially small children and others. I I think the most appropriate place is to probably refer this to the Public Safety Committee and have them uh work with our health agent and animal control officer and maybe the chief of police on working through it. So entertain a motion to refer to Public Safety Committee.
So moved.
Okay, now I see no further discussion. I'll move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, moving on, item D, ordinance D, F Y twenty-two dash zero two one, zoning ordinance. Notification of zoning bylaws to ordinances, uh refer to Council Columbodis and Wood. Council Wood, Council Wood for us.
Thank you. Um, so earlier this evening, uh, Ms. Neri talked about, you know, our workshops, and we've had quite a few on the subject of zoning, and there were quite a few changes that we um we're going to adopt or recommend to adopt, and, and the problem was, it became such a volume that um it just made sense to kind of restart the process. And so what you see before you is the, the document or uh close to the document of where we left off in the workshop, so it reintroduces the zoning as a whole, because we couldn't adopt the last version uh as it was, and that was the process that the planning board had to give a thumbs up or thumbs down to. So we're starting over again with, after uh we've had, you know, five or six different workshops on the subject with changes in there. And we're, we'll start the process. Uh, so there's, there's two things that have come to my attention today. One is um that maybe some of the changes that were in the workshops have not yet made it into this, this particular version. Um, and we will have to adopt uh amendments to make those corrections. And number two is, um, with respect to the over fifty-five community piece that uh Councilmore has sponsored, we need to find a way to reconcile that um in into one, one body of language that makes sense, because what's in with, what's in our, our zoning today is not what's in the zoning that's being considered, which is not matching up. The Councilmore is, is said, so um expect after this process that we'll probably have some amendments to recommend. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, okay, any other questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, uh entertain a motion to refer to Planning and Community Economic Development Committee.
So moved.
Okay, I move for a roll call vote.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. George?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, moving on, item E, ordinance D, F Y twenty-two dash zero two two, proposed Bridgewater zoning bylaw amendment, adult retirement, community, and planned development district, uh defer to Councilmore.
Uh, sure, so I think this one requires an introduction. Uh, it came to me as a District One counselor. Uh, the property owners, Clermont, uh were asking for a zoning amendment change to support an over fifty-five community uh with upscale amenities and activities on their existing property. Um, if you're familiar with that, the area, there's a little road back, I think access is on the right, there's a little cul-de-sac. The property that they're looking to use is on the left on that cul-de-sac. Um, so I researched the project uh over the past few months. I spoke with the owners, I spoke with some town employees um to get a sense of uh the community impact and also the, the what potential alternative uses that could, could be there. And so based on that, um, I do believe that it fits into our strategic vision. Uh, I think it builds uh multi-generational resources. I think it increases revenues for the town without um, without the, the drain on schools that we might see from other types of development. So it could potentially offset those. Um, I think it brings disposable income to the town uh that can benefit our businesses. I think we also get the benefit of drive-through revenue from people that are visiting uh are working at those facilities. And I think it's also set back uh in an area with sort of comparable architecture. So I say, I think the placement um is, is right for this kind of idea. So, so based on that, um, I did see it as a net positive, uh and I'm sponsoring the, the zoning amendment based on that. Um, I would encourage the resident who, who spoke uh earlier, some of the points that she mentioned, I hadn't heard before. I also didn't receive a letter, so I would like to, to receive that letter and um and connect with that resident to maybe learn a little bit more about those ideas.
Hey, any questions from the council? Okay, seeing none. Uh, we refer this also, Planning and Community Economic Development Committee.
So moved.
Okay, uh move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, moving on, item F, ordinance D, F Y twenty-two dash zero two three. Revoke Mass General Law Chapter forty-four, section fifty-three, F and a half Gulf Enterprise Fund, defer to the town manager.
Uh, Mr. President, I think most of the council knows uh that a, an enterprise fund is designed to uh essentially establish a business. Enterprise fund takes in revenues and expends uh, expends money for the purpose of uh of continuing that uh business enterprise, since we do not uh manage or we do not run the golf course at this point. Um, before the end of the fiscal year, we need to uh revoke that particular enterprise fund. Um, and I will jump ahead to item L, which would be adoption of a receipts, receipts, reserve receipts reserved for appropriation account, uh which will allow the uh payments in uh to an account. And then the council can uh appropriate those funds with uh, with a vote. Uh, so this, this merely uh eliminates the Gulf Enterprise Fund, and the existing balance would shift to the um, there was the receipts reserved for appropriation account.
Excellent. Any questions from the council? Okay, see, and then, uh, let's see, entertain a motion to refer to Budget Finance and Finance Committee.
I'll move. Second.
Okay, move to, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. George?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, moving on, item G, order zero F Y twenty-three dash zero zero one, F Y twenty twenty-three annual town budget, defer to the town manager.
Uh, Mr. President, really don't have anything additional to add, but I'm sure this will be the topic of conversation for a few weeks in the Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
Excellent. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, entertain a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Moving on, item H, order zero F Y twenty-three dash zero zero two, budget order, F Y twenty-three, water enterprise fund budget, defer to the town manager, maybe just provide an explanation on the next three enterprise funds.
The uh, Mr. President, next three enterprise funds uh is, uh, were all, those budgets were also part of a, a separate packet that went out uh to the council and the finance committee uh this afternoon, uh but uh, but uh those do continue to be enterprises, uh that's water, sewer, and transfer station. Um, but with uh council action to eliminate the Gulf Enterprise Fund, uh moving forward, we'll only have those uh three.
Excellent. Any questions for the town manager on uh F Y twenty-three water enterprise fund budget? Okay, seeing none, entertain a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
So moved.
And second. Okay, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. George?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Moving on, item I, order zero F Y twenty-three dash zero zero three, budget order, F Y twenty-three sewer enterprise fund budget. Let's attain any questions from the council, the town manager? Seeing none, entertain a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Moving on, item J, order zero F Y twenty- Moving on, item J, order zero F Y twenty-three dash zero zero four, budget order, F Y twenty-three Transfer Station Enterprise Fund Budget. Any questions from the council, the town manager? Seeing none, uh, entertain a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
So moved.
And move for a roll call vote.
Mister Columbotus?
Yes.
Mister Wood?
Yes.
Mister Moore?
Yes.
Mister Souza?
Yes.
Mister Rushton?
Yes.
Mister Chase?
Yes.
Doctor Perry?
Yes.
Mister Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mister George? Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, moving on, item K, order zero F Y twenty-three dash zero zero five, budget order, authorization of revolving funds to further the town manager.
Mr. President, each year the council uh, must reauthorize the four revolving funds that we have. And uh, this order uh, does just that.
Okay, excellent, any questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, entertain a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
I'll move, I'll move.
And move for a roll call vote.
Mister George? Mister Gallagher?
Yes.
Doctor Perry?
Yes.
Mister Chase?
Yes.
Mister Rushton?
Yes.
Mister Souza?
Yes.
Mister Moore?
Yes.
Mister Wood?
Yes.
And Mister Columbotus? Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, moving on, item L, ordinance D F Y twenty-three dash zero zero one, acceptance of Mass General Law Chapter forty-four. Section fifty-three, F thirty-three quarters, Old Scotland Links Golf Course Receipts Reserved for Appropriation, defer to the town manager.
Uh, Mr. President, this is not a Harry Potter uh, stop on the train system, this is uh, actually the creation. Of a uh, the fund that I was just talking about that will hold. The revenues that we get from the management company and will be available for appropriation uh, through the council.
Excellent, any questions from the council? Counselor Gallagher? Nope, he's saying no, okay. I understand a motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committee. Okay, move for a roll call vote.
Mister Columbotus? Mister Wood?
Yes.
Mister Moore?
Yes.
Mister Souza?
Yes.
Mister Rushton?
Yes.
Mister Chase?
Yes.
Doctor Perry?
Yes.
Mister Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mister George?
Yes.
It's eight in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, moving on to citizens' comments, any citizens wishing to speak during citizens' comments? Debbie, I, I do not see any.
Nor do I.
Okay, moving on, council comments, Council George.
Thank you, Mister President, um. What I'd like to remind. Uh, the council and, and people in Bridgewater is, believe it or not, July fourth is fast approaching. Um, I think the July fourth committee last year did a phenomenal job. Putting on a great parade, uh, fireworks. I know that they're up and running on their fundraising for this year. So I would hope that um, people would be as generous as they have been in the past. About contributing, uh, just as a reminder. Uh, the parade, the fireworks is all fundraising that pays for it. There are no funds coming from the town, um, so hopefully people will, will extend. Uh, support for that, so we can have a great event. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council George, Council Gallagher.
Thank you, Mister President, um, it's that time of year again, um. I know that uh, the uh, DPW department's been out there and has been doing some patchwork on. Some of the potholes in town, but we now need to get some citizens out there to help us clean up the side streets. Of the town as well. Um, Council George and I have put together a um, townwide cleanup day on Saturday, April thirtieth. As we did last year, we were great, we're grateful to have this sponsor of waste innovations to supply the. Truck to take the trash away, they will provide trash bags, a safety T-shirt. And other things people to use, so on Saturday from nine to noon on April thirtieth, we'll announce this one more time on our April nineteenth meeting. Um, doesn't mean you have to wait till April thirtieth, but I know some people have gone out and picked up trash on their own, but. Would like to have a good presence, a good turnout of people to come out and just help us clean up the areas of the town, so we look. We look pretty good going into the summer months. Thank you.
Counsel Perry?
Uh, just great sentiments by those councils, I uh, agree with them wholeheartedly, um, just wishing everyone a happy Easter season upcoming. And uh, we'll see you in the next meeting in two weeks, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Perry, Counsel Chase.
Uh, thank you, Mister President, uh, the um, uh, this is actually the last council meeting prior to. Uh, the town election uh, to take place on Saturday, the twenty-third. And I think it's uh, most important to remind ourselves and remind all the citizens of Bridgewater that are very important. Um, uh, feature of the election is a ballot question to approve the fire station that. Uh, we have been discussing earlier this evening. Um, as uh, many residents now have come to realize, there are informational sessions that. The town manager has referred to uh, uh, this evening as well, that provide a great deal of important background information and. Uh, we of the council, I think are unanimous in our understanding that this is really an essential. Project and one that um, certainly deserves scrutiny by the citizens, but. It absolutely deserves support by the citizens. And I think that uh, uh, we should all just be um, uh, just be very dutiful in terms of, you know, marking our calendars. Making sure that we're uh, available and prepared to vote on Saturday, the twenty-third. And hopefully you, you will find that um, uh, it's an appropriate um, action that we propose for the. The building of the new fire department headquarters. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Chase, Counsel Souza.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Moore.
Yeah, I, I think just building on what others have said, I think one of the interesting things that I've learned over the last year is. The more involved you are, the more you hear about, and the more you assume everyone else knows about. Um, but I think what I realize is as I start to talk about things like the fire station. With people that aren't maybe on Facebook or, or aren't um, listening through YouTube or something later. Um, they might not be aware of it, so I would just encourage those of us who are active. Um, to reach out maybe to people that aren't quite as connected and help them learn about. Things like the fire station and other things that are important for the town. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Moore, Counsel Wood.
Thanks, a couple things tonight, it's not really a question to the town manager, but. Um, in, in, and you know, the election's run by the town clerk, but maybe a, a couple signs out. After the, the um, traffic signs like we did before would be a good idea, cause as, as Counselor Moore and others have said. A lot of people have no idea, A, that there's an election on April twenty-third and B, that there's a couple important items on there. There's always important items, solve them. Um, I will also say the robotics team is doing well, and I, I say that not because I'm talking about robotics, but. Um, if they go to the world championships, I'll probably go with them and I will be absent. On election day, so there's a solution for that, an easy solution for all of our voters to take. Which is you go over to the town clerk's office, uh, either Merrily or, or one of the uh, Jolie or Christine will help you out. And just fill out an absentee form and vote, um, it's not early voting, it's absentee voting, but you can get your vote done. Um, and not miss out on the vote if you're gonna be out of town that day, it's, it's really a critical step. Um, if you wanna have your voice heard, but you're not gonna be here to get that done. The last point is um. Something that I touched on earlier this week. Um, last week I, I spent uh, uh, quite a few conversations with the, the finance team. And the town manager on the, on the financing numbers involved. And as we've heard in the presentation, I'm sure it's in the presentation going up, the tax rate for the fire station. Is, is estimated to be forty-two cents uh, per thousand, so using a um. Uh, an average home price of four hundred and fifty thousand, which seems like it's a common value used elsewhere. That number works out to be a hundred and eighty-nine dollars per year for the average homeowner of four hundred and fifty thousand. So when you back up a little bit and start talking about the elementary school funding. The last presentation prior to the election for the elementary school. Told us that our tax rate would be affected by a dollar twenty for that, that new building. And we all voted yes on the, on the building and we accepted that, that burden of tax rate. But through good luck and a lot of creative financial work. Um, that is set, you can see it on the town website for your tax rate calculator. It is currently set at sixty-nine cents, not at a dollar twenty. And the conversation I had with the finance department was to understand that that. Uh, was a good number, and they said it might go up a few cents, but would not exceed seventy-eight cents per thousand. So the original cost for the school was gonna be an annual, again, using four hundred and fifty thousand. An annual cost to, to the average homeowner of five hundred and forty dollars, but at sixty-nine cents. That cost is now lower to three hundred and ten dollars, and that's a difference of two hundred and thirty dollars. And if it creeps up a little bit to seventy-eight cents, that difference is a hundred and eighty-nine dollars. And that hundred and nine eighty-nine dollars is exactly what the fire station is estimated to be for the fund. So we are effectively getting, because of good luck and, and good finance practice. We're effectively getting two projects done for what we were told the elementary school would cost us. If people don't see that this is a huge value to the town, then you know, talk to us again, I'll show you all the numbers behind it, but. But I, I'm, I'm looking at it from my, from my wallet's point of view. And I'm getting two projects for the price of one, and, and it's a really good deal. And I strongly support the fire station for many other reasons that have been spoken before, but also for that reason as well. Um, thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Counsel Wood, Counsel Columbotus. I'm not even sure he's here, is he here?
I don't believe he is.
He got sick of listening to Counsel Wood, so he left the meeting. Well, certainly, I, I guess I'd start out by saying to Counsel Wood, Chase and Moore, who have all discussed the, um, you know, the. The difficulty in communicating with the public, um, you know, I really feel with the time that we have left outside of the community presentations. Outside of the community Zoom meetings. I, I'm hoping that we all take our own responsibility seriously to share and have as many discussions as we can about this project. Having sat in, I wanna say it's the one hundred and sixty-seventh meeting of the school committee, building committee. You know, ve- very early on, seeing how quickly we bonded um, some of the money and seeing the quotes come in for the project. And the savings that's there. Uh, I've also been mentioning as we closing out this project, it's just a few months away. You know, we, we're, we're sitting on about, and Michael probably hates me for keep saying this, but you know, close to four million dollars in contingency money. And uh, you know, I really with the designers at the last meeting talked about, you know, typically for a project that, that, that's this close to wrapping up. This summer, you know, what does that funding look like? Would you typically use that four million? Um, how much are we looking to have? So. They feel really confident that we're gonna have a significant amount of uh, funds left over from this project, but wanted to mention that as well. And it's a great point that Counsel Wood has. It's the financial piece that this fire building somewhat is almost paid for in our original ask for the elementary school. Um, so I talk a lot about emotion and it not just being a, another municipal building for our community. This is, and some of, again, Michael probably wants to kill me, but I keep saying this, cause I think it's so important that. This fire station is beyond a municipal building, it's a home to fifty-five of our firefighters who. If you understand how they do shift work, really spend more time there than with their own families. And, and there's so many things that throughout this process that I've learned about firefighter cancer. And really good building design, and this new fire headquarters meets all of those needs, but first and foremost for me. It protects the fifty-five men and women of the fire department and our future growth as a town and a place to house them in a very safe environment. So for those reasons, outside of the financial, I strongly support it and I ask that. All of you, when you're having uh, discussions over the next couple of weeks, uh, strongly encourage people to come out and vote. Either way they vote, just, uh, uh, the only thing I could ask is that it's informed, that they have the big picture and they understand the financial. Uh, impact and that really with, this is our only option, uh, somebody asked us today, you know, what is plan B? It really isn't a plan B, cause this has to pass, this is the right thing to do and the right timing for it, so I appreciate all that. I'll just quickly shift into some of the conversations with BTV and some of the technical difficulties. Although it seems to have been resolved. Uh, Bridgewater, um. Bridgewater Cable TV, BTV are in serious need of just regular volunteers to keep up with their regular programming. Um, and they've asked, uh, if, if at least for us to communicate to the community that they're looking for people to not only. Set up with these meetings, but help them at various events. There's a number of things they can do, they're looking at BSU students and also BA students that could be eligible for internship credit. And community service credit. Uh, and potentially even seniors might be able to get some sort of uh, rebate using the SAVE program, so. Please reach out to Jeff Fowler at BTV, um, again, looking for volunteers to help. So with that being said, I'll move uh, to our next item was the executive session. Uh, entertain a motion to move into executive session under MGL Chapter thirty A, section twenty-one little A. To discuss strategy with respect to litigation, we're discussing the matter in open meeting, will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining. Or litigation position of the public body and to adjourn from executive session. Okay, entertain a ro- roll call vote, please.
Sorry, I was on mute. Mister George?
Yes.
Mister Gallagher?
Yes.
Doctor Perry?
Yes.
Mister Chase?
Yes.
Mister Rushton?
Yes.
Mister Souza?
Yes.
Mister Moore?
Yes.
Mister Wood?
Yes.
And Mister Columbotus? Eight in favor, zero opposed. Alright.
You left, no, we're all set, Debbie.
Yep, let me get everybody.
I'll be right back.